Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for June 12th. Ms. Fister, would you please call the rule?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, we don't have advanced briefing, so you're off the hook, Mr. Perkins, for the most part today. We do have lots of requests to change agendas, substitute versions, move from emergency to non-emergency, all sorts of things. So we'll use our time, and then eventually, we're going to have an executive session to discuss potential labor agreements and litigation. But the first thing I see is on number one, a consent agenda, we still have not gotten word from the county that they have changed their bylaw or their, I don't know if it's an ordinance or whatever they have, to comply with city law on our representation on the Shrek board. So they respectfully declined last week, and we sent Mr. Smithson back to them with the copy of our law to get them to see if they would be willing to do that. I'm assuming, I don't know if we have any update, but, go ahead, come on up.
Good afternoon, Council President. Thank you for having me. I do not have an update, so I apologize, haven't gotten anywhere as far as that goes. I would maybe suggest we defer it 30 days, I don't know if that's what everybody...
Can we do it indefinitely?
That's what I was going to suggest.
Well, the only reason, I like the idea of, I was first indefinitely, but I like the idea of it coming back every few weeks so that we can harangue Mr. Smithson so that he can harangue them.
Couple reasons for that. One, it keeps it on my radar, so I will make sure that I contact them. The other thing, too, is that we do want to address at some point because they could revoke their amendment, and we would have to pay the service fees, so I don't want to get to that point. So I will make sure that I get back with council or the commissioners, and then hopefully I have an update in 30 days.
Move to defer till July 10th.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any oppose?
Aye.
Nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred. Well, okay, let's see, that's deferred. That's all for consent?
There's item number nine.
Thank you.
To defer that one.
Let's see. Oh, that's, I can't remember if we did that last time, but this is a new request?
Right.
Okay, sorry about that. There's a request for, and I'm looking for a motion to determine item number nine until June 26th.
So moved.
Second. Okay, any discussion?
That's the sidewalk project, just double check. Yeah.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? No? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred until June 26th. All right. Okay, the next, first up, is Councilmember Stratton and Cathcart, and perhaps Bingle, is our sponsors of C36394 relating to parks. I think you have a...
Yes.
...motion of sorts.
So, Council President, I move to substitute the version that I shared with everybody of the parks ordinance around noon today, thereby removing the emergency clause and adding it to the first reading ordinance on tonight's agenda.
And final reading on the 26th?
Yes.
All right.
Second.
Okay, move to seconded. Any discussion about that motion to substitute? And, oh, you know what? We need to suspend the rules first, but that's all right, I didn't ask you to do that. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adding ordinances to first reading tonight and final reading on the 26th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just for this one item?
No, there's multiple ones on this.
Okay.
There's several similar ones, but nothing that's not here.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? No? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred until June 26th. All right. Okay, the next, first up, is Councilmember Stratton and Cathcart, and perhaps Bingle, is our sponsors of C36394 relating to parks. I think you have a...
Yes.
...motion of sorts.
So, Council President, I move to substitute the version that I shared with everybody of the parks ordinance around noon today, thereby removing the emergency clause and adding it to the first reading ordinance on tonight's agenda.
And final reading on the 26th?
Yes.
All right.
Second.
Okay, move to seconded. Any discussion about that motion to substitute? And, oh, you know what? We need to suspend the rules first, but that's all right, I didn't ask you to do that. Is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adding ordinances to first reading tonight and final reading on the 26th?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Just for this one item?
No, there's multiple ones on this.
Okay.
There's several similar ones, but nothing that's not here.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any oppose? No? Any abstentions? All right, rules are suspended, and I will accept your motion as stated and slightly modified by me for that final reading. And there was a second. Is there any discussion about that?
I guess I have a question.
Yep.
Moving it from an emergency ordinance, can you explain to the public what that would do, the impact that would have if it's no longer an emergency ordinance?
Well, it will give SPD a good timeframe to do some public education, and as I understand it, the Blake decision has been revoked, will be revoked, and won't take effect until, the new laws won't take effect till August 14th, is that correct?
15th.
15th, yeah, so there wasn't a need to use it as an emergency.
I would just add, it also means that four votes passes it rather than five, and it also means that should there be the interest, the public could try to run a referendum with it not being an emergency.
Also, it goes into effect in 30 days as opposed to right away.
Right. That's our education period.
Those all seem to be correct statements.
Well, I think that, I mean, there is a concern there, because I know from our discussion with the police, they really urgently wanted this, was their need.
Correct, and they were also part of the last discussions we had on when we tried to get to an agreement between the two ordinances, and they were willing, they wanted to do it right, and they wanted to do it even if they had to extend the time, because they felt that that would be a good timeline for some partnerships to educate the public on the new law.
But they could still educate the public if it were an emergency ordinance, they did not have to...
There was a decision by the group that we would run it as a, it would not be an emergency ordinance.
Fine. I guess, I have heard the need and the desire for it to be implemented when school is out this week, and that was the concern, especially because kids are going to be out, people are going to be in the parks, and there's this concern over summer, and so moving it away from the emergency ordinance, I think, is unfortunate, because it removes the tool for half of the summer, and I think that is something that neighborhoods will be frustrated about, and I think that'd be great if we could find an agreement to get it back to an emergency ordinance that could be effective immediately, because no matter who it is in the park, if it's an educational period, that could be a group that could potentially cause violence over the next 30 days in that interim, beyond 30 days, now we're looking at the end of July of when this would get passed, and it seems like it's because we can't find an agreement, and I think that's frustrating.
I will tell you that the neighborhoods and the neighborhood councils, we share those councils, the people that I've talked to are desperate for something, and if we have to go this route to get it, to get some police presence in our parks at early morning hours and late night hours, I think they're willing to wait for it to be a good ordinance that we can move forward with. And Councilmember Oppone, you don't have to vote for it, so...
Well, I would...
I'm just telling you, the group met, all of us that worked on it, decided it was our agreement that it did not have to be an emergency ordinance.
I know that we talk a lot about trying to find compromise, and so this just looks like it's because we can't find a compromise that we have to go that route, so...
We were not able to reach compromise.
We still have time, but I hope we can find something.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, and more importantly than just something being in effect right now, the most important thing was that the tool be effective based on what our feedback was. And so while speed would be great, and Councilmember Oppone, you can always vote for this, and we can have an emergency as written, that would be great, but we know that that's not going to happen, but the most effective thing that we can do is give law enforcement an effective tool to keep our parks safe. And the amendments that have come, the suggestions that have come, are not suggestions that the police believe are going to give us the ability to keep our parks as safe as possible. It would remove their ability to have, would remove the tool that they're asking for, and so while I agree, emergency would be great, I think it would be a great statement by this council as well, it's just not there, and so the most, the best thing that we can do, because there are going to be many summers after this one, is to get an effective tool in place.
And I'm going to call in Councilmember Wilkerson, and after Councilmember Wilkerson, Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you, and I hear it, but I too am challenged with, it was such a crisis, if it's not an emergency, it'll be the end of July, officers will have tools to address these problems in the park between now and then, so if they have tools to address it between now and then, then what will be the purpose of adding on another tool for them to be effective? And that's just my question going forward, to help me understand that, and I understand Councilmember Stratton, the work, and just another side note, I was in West Central over the weekend just talking to neighbors, and many of them hadn't even heard, I says, "What about the issues in the park?" And many of them had no idea what the issues in the park are, or what I was even talking about, so I'm concerned about a vocal group driving into discussion or ordinance that really isn't impacting everybody equally, but if it's voted on, it will impact everybody across the board, so that's my challenge.
Councilmember Kinnear, and then I've got some in the room.
Thank you. First of all, Councilmember Stratton, I couldn't hear a word you said, so could you please speak into your microphone? Secondly, I was told that police could use the one month, and I don't know if this is true, this might be urban legend, they could use that one month if it's not an emergency to educate, so I'm going to put that out there, but I have no, I cannot verify that that's the case, and if somebody could answer that, that'd be great.
That is correct.
Could you hear that?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, it's, I feel like I'm handicapped here because you're all there.
Yep.
And I'm here, so it is hard to hear if you're not speaking right into your microphone.
No, it was fine. I was just trying to inject some slight levity in a serious conversation. I saw Councilmember, I think Cathcart, and then Councilmember Bingle. Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I think just at the end of the day, policymaking is the art of what's possible, and I think in front of us is an example of what so far is possible with the most effective version of the tool, and unfortunately, it just means that it has to take longer to be implemented. But as we heard, we had a call, what was it, Friday, and we talked this through, then included law enforcement, included a number of folks, and the discussion really was, and the council president was there as well, and the discussion really was, you know, is, are any of these alternative proposals going to make the tool as effective or less effective? And generally, the perspective was that it would be less effective, and so the 30 days was preferred to a less effective tool, essentially, and so, again, this is what's possible, and so that's what we're moving ahead with. The other piece that I would just say is, for folks that aren't aware of issues in the parks, God bless you, I mean, that's great that you live in an area where you don't have to worry about this, but unfortunately, I have a lot of residents, a lot of constituents, and a lot of folks who are scared to death of what's happening in the park across the street or down the road, and they don't want to see more, you know, shootouts, they don't want to see more dealing, they just don't want to see any of that happening in our parks, and so whatever we can do to get a handle on making our parks safer, I think is a must for this council.
Councilmember Stratton wanted to just add on something, and then I'll get to you. Councilmember Bingle?
I just want to also add something that was important from the conversation that we had as a group last week, and, you know, we've received letters and people telling us that, you know, if there's shootings, fightings, drug-related activity, graffiti, absolutely the police can arrest those people. And one of the things that was said by Captain Hendren that just struck me was he said, "But this is an opportunity to try and stop it before it happens," which means that if a neighbor calls, and we've had shootings at Dwight Merkel, we've had shootings at Cannon Park, we've had shootings at Dutch Jake Park, we've had shootings and deaths at Franklin Park, that maybe that one person calls and says, "We have two people walking through the park or sitting under a tree, and they're yelling at each other," and maybe that police officer, under this new ordinance, "Oh, you know, I have a reason to go in now and approach him before the guns come out and before the drugs come out, and maybe we can alleviate some of those instances of crime and shootings that are happening throughout North and Northwest Spokane." So that's the power in that discussion that I gained from that, is giving them one more tool in their toolbox, they're not going to be able to do it all the time, but that's one tool when they get that call, that they know they can go in and say, "You know what? This is trespassing, I can go in, I can go further, I can talk to them," and it's not just shushing them out of the park, but it's really looking at what are they doing there? Do they have guns? Do they have drugs? And so that's been the goal of this ordinance, working with parks and SPD and neighborhoods, and Audubon, too, we had a shooting in Audubon as well, nobody was hit, but there were gunfires. So that's what this is about, and I'm proud of the partnership we've had with parks and police and council. I think it's, again, it's one more tool that, and it also includes police and parks coming back to council and providing data on demographics of who's getting arrested, who's breaking the law, to make sure that we're treating people fairly and equitably. So the fact that we didn't have a compromise, and the fact that it's not going to be a... be, would be great, I think it would be a great statement by this council as well. It's, it's just not there. And so the most, the best thing that we can do, because there are going to be many summers after this one, is to get an effective tool in place.
And I'm going to call in Councilmember Wilkerson, and after Councilmember Wilkerson, Councilmember Kinnear.
Thank you, and I, I hear it, but I'm, I too am challenged with, it was such a crisis. If it's not an emergency, it'll be the end of July. Officers will have tools to address these problems in the park between now and then. So if they have tools to address it between now and then, then what will be the purpose of adding on another tool for them to be effective? And that's just my question going forward, to help me understand that. And I understand Councilmember Stratton, the work, and just another side note, I was in West Central over the weekend just talking to neighbors, and many of them hadn't even heard. I says, what about the issues in the park? And many of them had, had no idea what the issues in the park are, or what I was even talking about. So I'm concerned about a vocal group driving into discussion or ordinance that really isn't impacting everybody equally. But if it's voted on, it will impact everybody across the board. So that's, that's my challenge.
Councilmember Kinnear, and then I've got some in the room.
Thank you. First of all, Councilmember Stratton, I couldn't hear a word you said, so could you please speak into your microphone? Secondly, I was told that police could use the one month, and I don't know if this is true. This might be urban legend. They could use that one month if it's not an emergency to educate. So I'm going to put that out there, but I have no, I cannot verify that that's the case. And if somebody could answer that, that'd be great.
That is correct.
Could you hear that?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. It's, I feel like I'm handicapped here because you're all there.
Yep.
Here. So it is hard to hear if you're not speaking right into your microphone.
No, it was fine. I was just trying to inject some slight levity in a serious conversation. I saw Councilmember, I think Cathcart, and then Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I mean, I think just at the, at the end of the day, policymaking is the art of what's possible. And I think in front of us is an example of, of what so far is possible with the, the most effective version of the tool. And unfortunately, it just means that it has to take longer to be implemented. But as we heard, we had a call, what was it, Friday, and we talked this through, then included law enforcement, included a number of folks, and, and the discussion really was, and the council president was there as well, and that the discussion really was, you know, is, are any of these alternative proposals going to make the tool as effective or, or less effective? And generally, the perspective was that it would be less effective. And so the, the 30 days was preferred to a less effective tool essentially. And so, again, this is, this is what's possible, and so that's what we're moving ahead with. The other piece that I would just say is for folks that aren't aware of issues in the parks, God bless you. I mean, that's, that's great that you live in an area where you don't have to worry about this. But unfortunately, I have a lot of residents, a lot of constituents, and a lot of folks who are scared to death of what's happening in the park across the street or down the road. And they don't want to see more, you know, shootouts, they don't want to see more dealing, they just don't want to see any of that happening in our parks. And so whatever we can do to get a handle on making our parks safer, I think is a must for this, this council.
Councilmember Stratton wanted to just add on something, and then I'll get to you. Councilmember Bingle?
I just want to also add something that was important from the conversation that we had as a group last week. And, you know, we've received letters and people telling us that, you know, if there's shootings, fightings, drug-related activity, graffiti, absolutely the police can, can, can arrest those people. And one of the things that was said by Captain Hendren that just struck me was he said, but this is an opportunity to try and stop it before it happens, which means that if a neighbor calls, and we've had shootings at Dwight Merkel, we've had shootings at Cannon Park, we've had shootings at Dutch Jake Park, we've had shootings and deaths at Franklin Park, that maybe that one person calls and says, we have two people walking through the park or sitting under a tree, and they're yelling at each other, and maybe that police officer, under this new ordinance, oh, you know, I have a reason to go in now and approach him before the guns come out and before the drugs come out. And maybe we can alleviate some of those instances of crime and shootings that are happening throughout North and Northwest Spokane. So that's the power in that discussion that I gained from that, is giving them one more tool in their toolbox. They're not going to be able to do it all the time, but that's one tool when they get that call, that they know they can go in and say, you know what, this is trespassing, I can go in, I can go further, I can talk to them. And it's not just shushing them out of the park, but it's really looking at what are they doing there? Do they have guns? Do they have drugs? And so that's been the goal of this ordinance, working with parks and SPD and neighborhoods. And Audubon, too, we, we had a shooting in Audubon as well. Nobody was hit, but there were gunfires. So that's what this is about. And I'm, I'm proud of the partnership we've had with parks and police and council. I think it's, it, again, it's one more tool that, and it also includes police and parks coming back to council and providing data on demographics of who, who's getting arrested, who's breaking the law, to make sure that we're treating people fairly and equitably. So the fact that we didn't have a compromise, and the fact that it's not going to be an emergency, I just want to get this passed so they have that tool, so they have the time to organize, to educate. I've talked to organizations in Spokane, they're going to help us do that. And so that's all I'm going to say.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, and it's important to note that we were approached with this not just from the police, but also from the park board. And, you know, I sit on the park board as the liaison. This is a, a real topic of discussion. But this was brought to us and asked for as a tool by both the police and the park board months and months ago. So it wouldn't have needed to be an emergency ordinance had we done it back then. And it's no substantially different today than it was then. And so while, yes, we wanted to have it done before summer, again, the most important thing was that it be effective. And we could have had it done by their timeframe had we not deferred it so much.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you. I'll just ask, since it's not an emergency, I'd like to kind of see what the communication plan is going to be, because anecdotally, we'll say, we're going to educate, and we're going to communicate. I'd like to see what that actually looks like to make sure that it's going forward, and what kind of timeline that would be implemented in. That would be challenging, if not.
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah. Fiona, if you're watching, would you?
We can get that.
Send us an email, yeah, on that.
And I just wanted to note that I was at the meeting searching for a compromise, and I had a different opinion and conclusion, but I was at the meeting. I appreciated being at the meeting. I appreciate the chance to try to do that. Obviously, this is, people are passionate about this, all, all well-intended passions, all good. And I think the question is, what is the effective, most effective tool? And we disagree at the moment, but we will renew this likely on the 26th. But is there any other discussion before the motion to substitute and move to first reading tonight and final reading on the 26th? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Or no, excuse me?
No.
No? And any abstentions? All right, so that, that motion passes. The next-
The council president, was that four three? Is that what that was?
I believe so. The next ordinance, I'm just going to note for a moment, we're not going to address it at the moment, but there are some kind of Scrivener clerical changes that need to happen on it because the name of a national certifying agency has been changed. So we'll probably amend that later, but just giving anyone who's keeping score at home, we might do that, but it's not on the substance of it. Next, I think I'm going to go to Councilmember Kinnear. I'm going over to first reading of ordinance, well, we'll get to that, sorry, sorry, not going to confuse you any more than I just did. The next, next ordinance is 36396, and I am looking for a motion to similar to the last one, make it not an emergency, and add it to first reading tonight and final reading on the 26th.
So move.
Second.
So the effect is we're just deferring this two weeks?
Yeah, it is. Rather than have a vote on it tonight.
Okay.
All right, any discussion on that?
I was just going to say, so this would be a competing parks version.
With a Blake response also in it, but there's going to be other motions to deal with that. But for now, yeah. And it might get amended to be a different, this, this had the one where you, if they didn't leave when warned, or were found 30 days, within 30 days at another park after hours, that would be the misdemeanor, it'd be more limited than the one that we just voted on. But there are other ideas for amendment, so. All right. All those in favor of those changes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay.
No. Okay, I think that was, oh, any abstentions? And I mistakenly said nay, but we'll go with that. So that was also, that passed four to three. All right. Next is ordinance 36397 relating to the office of police ombudsman. We have had a few versions of this, just to tell anyone watching at home, and just reminding council members. The first was a very narrow version. It removed language that the city council put in, in 2013, in order to be consistent with the city charter that also passed in 2013. And then we had requests to make a lot of changes that would update to the collective bargaining agreement that was passed two years ago, and we haven't gotten those changes before. So right now, our code is wildly out of compliance with the collective bargaining agreement, but we're following the collective bargaining agreement. But I did get a, because that, those changes were made not very long ago, I did get an email today requesting from City Legal, time to really digest and make sure that they matched up. And so, my request is for, so then I sent around, just beginning of this meeting, a version that really goes back to the skinny version. It's just removing the language a different city council put in. And that also includes some language to address a request from councilmembers Cathcart and Bingle to make it clear that although the ombudsman under the city charter has the ability to investigate anything police, they should do everything they can to avoid the situation where they, their staff are participating directly in order to preserve relationships. So that is that. That's been circulated. I'm looking right now for a motion to substitute that version I circulated a few minutes ago.
So move substitution.
Second, yeah.
So, yeah, I don't know yet exactly where I stand. We just got this a few minutes ago, trying to digest the, the change. And it is a small change, but would like some time to, to ask some questions. But what I'm wondering is, would you be open to a deferral to the 26th for, to have that time, especially given the request on all the other changes that have come forward?
Well, I would prefer to get it done tonight, but what I would say is after you've had time to look at it, if you still feel the same way, we could maybe do that. And the reason is, a lot of people have been promoting that it's going to be a vote tonight. We've seen videos, and lots of people are planning to come down, I think, already. So, and since we've put so many exciting items on the 26th there. So I, I'm open to re, to thinking about that if people look at it.
Yeah, council president, can you explain, so what it's saying is it shall strive to let other entities perform an investigation on the chiefs of police, but the OPO, OPO still could do the investigation if no one else, no other entity could?
Because under the, under the charter, the mayor can initiate their own investigation. They always have that right of any department heads. And under the charter, the OPO can as well. And this is saying a preference for the mayor doing it. But if not, the OPO does have the power granted by the voters when they amended the charter.
I'll just, I will say, I, so, and the reason this came up was, I don't think the change that's being proposed about removing the, the piece by HR gives the authority then to the ombudsman. I think there's a number of places where that authority is sort of obstructed or limited. And, and in part, it's just relational. I mean, he has to go to the chief for permission on a number of things. And so if you create this sort of negative relationship, it, it basically makes the OPO position not all that effective anymore because he can't do a lot of his own work. And so what, one of the big things that I was asking for was, you know, can we find another entity, appropriate entity, that would be an investigating entity if there is that need? Because the, the OPO needs to preserve his relationship with the chief. And so I don't know exactly if this gets us there, but certainly it's a little bit closer than it was before.
So would this allow the OPO to go hire outside counsel to conduct an investigation?
In the OPO municipal code, if the police department refuses to do an investigation, the OPO commission can hire an outside investigator.
Okay, so they could effectively do that?
Yeah.
If they choose not to do it themselves?
Yeah.
And I think it comes down to just best practice for, again, preserving that relationship, you know. So I, I appreciate the language you put in there, like Councilman Cathcart, you know, we, we had this conversation, I appreciated you being open to it. I, I still don't know where I am on this. I would prefer to defer it. I, I understand your reasoning for not doing it. And it's not bad reasoning. I just would prefer to, because there is a number of changes on a number of really big items tonight, you know, to defer for a little bit to where we have some time, because after this executive session, you know, and I just don't know that I'll have enough time, so.
And that could be raised at any time.
And I just want to clarify, this would no longer require the mayor to do a HR investigation as SMC currently states.
Yeah, that, in this section of the code, the mayor has the power under the charter to investigate anyone.
Right, has the power. But this does require, now we're no longer requiring the mayor to initiate it under the SMC.
Yeah, I mean, and there's a question whether
That's applicable.
You could require the mayor to do it. So this, this language was put in a while ago from a different council. And all we're really doing is removing the language that a different council put in for some of the reasons that have been expressed. Councilmember Wilkerson?
I certainly want to preserve the relationship, but we got a video today, like 15 minutes ago, that really is not working in the same vein we are, to preserve a working relationship and communications going forward. So that's what I would like to do, but that has to be both sides of the House that want to accomplish that goal. And the video that was put out today did not make me feel like that's the position they wanted to take. So I can certainly defer it, but obviously, we need to update the code and, and the best path forward.
Councilmember Stratton?
I don't think that we need to defer it. I think we have enough to move forward, and we can make changes as we need to. But I would also recommend tonight, if we don't have somebody from the police department here to speak to this, if they want to comment on it, I would ask the council to consider showing the video that was sent out this afternoon so the community understands and we understand what the concerns are, because we've not had an opportunity.
To communicate.
Nobody's communicated with me. And so now that it's a video and it's out there, I think it'd be great to share it and to make this transparent and to address, address the concerns of the chief.
All right. Well, council president will take that under advisement to the degree that's in my discretion, but people can always do motions, so. All right, so motion is to substitute.
Moved. Did we second it?
Sorry, I moved in second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? Okay. That has been done, and then, all right, now we're at first reading ordinances.
Wait, council president, I had the motion on
I'm sorry.
Your park version, 36396.
Okay.
And that is a motion to substitute with language circulated by Jeff Gunn earlier today. That would effectively make it a misdemeanor for five or more, groups of five or more, and change the hours to 11:00 PM to 5:00 A.M.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Just for clarity, how, how do we change, how, how does this contemplate changing the, the hours of the parks? Because I thought the park board had that.
Yeah, wouldn't it change the hours of the parks? It would change the hours of when it was a crime. So it would still be a, closed whenever, but within that time, it's a crime.
I see, okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Other discussion? Councilmember Wilkerson?
We, I had discussion with Councilmembers Zepone about these groups, and five was a number that we came up usually. Because if it's two or three, we felt possibly the police, one officer could handle that. But when it becomes five or more, then that is challenging. That would just address that, so we don't have to worry about if it's one person or two people walking through the park, or whatever other scenario we could come up with. But a group of five would make sense if they're gathering together. Then there is more possibility for illegal behavior in the park, and it could be addressed at that time.
I, I also support the amendment because I think it gets to the heart of what we've been reported by the police of what the problem is, which is large competing groups coming together. That's when the, they're reporting the violence. And it also takes care of a lot of my concerns that you've heard me raise about somebody jogging in the park, somebody walking in the park, someone getting off at 18th and Grand, and then walking through the park to the west side of the park where the neighborhoods, and it's a much more lighted path than going all the way back down to 17th. It doesn't have a sidewalk on the park side. So it takes care of a lot of my concerns. So that's why I, I like it. Again, police, we're, we're not in favor of it, and they, they have their reasons on that. But I thought this was much narrower, but still addressed the, the core piece.
Yeah, council president, I just had that kind of seemed to be a compromise option that addressed a tool, providing police a tool, the city a tool, while also giving assurances to people in the neighborhoods who are nervous of the tool being used against them. And so that, that was why I offered that up.
I see. Councilmember Kinnear?
Yeah.
Thanks. A question, is the five-person rule, does that violate any First Amendment, right of assembly sorts of issues?
And, Councilmember Kinnear, yes, we received comment from Mary Meramatsu, Mary, yeah. And then Lyndon, do you want to come down, do you want to come down and address that?
Well, I'm just, I don't know that we should be addressing it in an open session, but we are having an executive session.
Okay. Is that where it's more appropriate?
My thinking is, well, we could talk about this in, in executive session.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
All right. And again, this isn't coming to a vote till the 26th, so there's time for that. But all those in favor-
I would just say, I think this helps as people are talking about it over the next two weeks, since this will be a discussion for the next two weeks. I think adding this to this ordinance, not Councilmember Stratton's ordinance, but the other one, puts it as part of the conversation.
So the motion is to add that new language to C36396. It's been seconded, and that, that's the one where Councilmember Kinnear and I proposed originally of the Blake response and the park, park rules misdemeanor section. So it's just the same thing that we've been, but, but it adds, the first one that we put in only had the warning piece, this adds in the five piece. I'm imagining, just as an editorial comment, by the time we get to the 26th, there may be fine tuning on both ordinances to do it. But all those in favor of adding this language to this ordinance indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. All those opposed, no?
No.
Any abstentions? All right, passes four to three. All right. Okay. Back to first reading ordinances, and there are two ordinances related to short-term rentals, 36391 and 36392. I've had at least, I've had requests for substitutions, and I've had requests for deferral till the 26th as well. I don't know if anyone wants to do a motion on one or more of those. Councilmember Kinnear, did you, go ahead.
I'd like to request a deferral, oh, June 26th, boy, that's going to be a busy night, unless you want to do it later, June 10th, or July 10th. I'm open to either.
For which one?
These are the two, short-term rental.
Oh.
The deferring both?
Yeah.
Second.
Do you have a preference on date?
I think we need a, do you have a preferred date?
Oh, I thought she said the 26th.
26th or the 10th.
26th or the 10th.
10th is fine. Apparently 26th is crazy, so.
Okay.
10th.
All right, so the motion is to defer to the 10th. You seconded it?
First reading or second?
That'll be the final reading. So first reading will be on the 26th.
Just a question of what, why, the request for deferral?
There's a bunch of moving parts and changes that are continuing to go on. Oh, all very productive conversation, but. Any other conversation on that? All right, all those in favor of deferring- All those in favor of deferring 91 and 92 to July 10th for final reading and June 26th for first reading indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Any abstentions? All right, that is deferred. And then now, council member Kinnear, you have on here an ordinance, C36399, which my understanding is just limited to the repeal of the drug possession in public spaces municipal code provisions we passed a few weeks ago.
Correct. And.
And you are.
That allows us all to, I think, we're all supportive of that without the par play piece, so I wanted to separate those out so that they're, I was trying not to simplify things.
Okay.
Things are getting very complicated and muddy right now, so I wanted to simplify it and get that Blake fix on its own.
So the rules are suspended and you want to add it to tonight's agenda for first reading and final reading on the 26th. Is that my understanding?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That's the motion.
Question, council president, so has that as a standalone ordinance gone to committee?
No, but the rules are suspended, so. It could, my current ruling, subject to four people disagreeing with me, is that it doesn't need to go to committee because it's essentially, it went to committee as part of the thing, but the rules are suspended.
So pulled out one from that has been.
Yep. Any discussion? So that'd be in the mix, one of three related ordinances on the 26th. Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
Any abstentions? Okay. I only heard one no, but was there two nos? Okay. Oh, you were abstention. Okay. That is, that is added to the agenda tonight for first reading and final reading on the 26th. All right. And that gets us to hearings and there is a potential motion to, I don't know, Mr. Bird, if you're there, was it a motion to amend or a motion to substitute? It was a motion to amend.
The hearing on the six-year street program?
Yeah.
Amend.
Okay. So there was some language circulated earlier today on amending the six-year street plan to make it clear that the planning for the Inland Empire Way in Leita Valley was for a two-year connection. Just added some language to what was already in there. And so is there a motion to add that? Councilmember Kinnear.
You meant two-way, not two-year, correct?
I did mean two-way, yes.
Okay, so I will make the motion. I would also add, in our conversation with Washdott, that they thought that was a better idea than one way as well. They didn't endorse it, but they nodded their heads.
All right. That's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Councilman Bingle.
Yeah. Which one are we discussing against or I get lost?
This is the six-year street plan.
H1.
And it is the, on the section of the plan that currently says, a plan for connection from 195 via Inland Empire Way to downtown, to make it clear that it's a two-way connection.
I'll just speak to that from Chair of SRTC, that this is on our work plan, that we're moving forward with Washdott and also looking for federal dollars to impact Inland Empire Way. So this just supports that whole movement in that direction.
Okay. All right. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Okay. That is amended slightly and that'll be on our hearing tonight.
Council president, do we need a motion for 0045?
Yes.
I will so move.
And that is, that is to add Jorell Haynes as Director of Office of Civil Rights.
Second.
Thank you.
So moved, is there a second?
Yeah.
Seconded? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Any abstentions? All right, that's added to our agenda tonight. I think that are all the changes which get us ready for an executive session where we have now four matters. We've got actual litigation, I believe. We've got two labor agreements to discuss and then we've got some advice on potential litigation. Oh, just one. All right, just one. All right. Then we'll be done by five, do you think?
Five.
I'm going to say five and then we extend, we extend. All right, so we're going into executive session to discuss collective bargaining issues, litigation and potential litigation. And we don't anticipate taking any further action this evening and we'll come back at 5:00 o'clock and either close the meeting or someone will extend it.
My next step, I was like, that's, that's creepy.
All right, we are back from executive session and our briefing session is adjourned. We'll see you at 6 o'clock.